Gracious God, for all good gifts, we give you thanks.
Yes.
Even hot weather, but we'd like for it not to be so hot. Keep us mindful particularly of our fellow citizens who are most disadvantaged or even in danger because of the weather. Help us work together as council and as a community to aid them as needed. Lord, I notice that no two of us here look alike. You must have a reason for that. Help us to appreciate and respect the individuality of each other person and bless us to be respected and appreciated for our individuality. And yet, help us work together, again, as a council and a community.
Yes.
For the welfare of all, we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
I call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Johnson?
Here.
City Attorney Peoples?
Here.
City Treasurer Martin?
Here.
Almost. Counselor Corium?
Here.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor McLendon?
Present.
Counselor Mundy?
Present.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Tyrone?
Here.
Counselor Carter?
Present.
Counselor Robinson?
Present.
Counselor Cat?
Here.
Nine out of ten present, sir.
All in favor, by aye. Opposed? They are approved. Under old business, we have the second reading of an ordinance on a juvenile curfew. Would you read the ordinance for the second time?
Title of this ordinance reads as follows: An ordinance to amend Chapter 6.38 of the West Memphis Municipal Code to revise the juvenile curfew and for other purposes.
Concludes the second reading. We've had a lot of discussion about this ordinance. Could I have a motion and a second to place it on its third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, by aye. Opposed? They are approved. Under old business, we have the second reading of an ordinance on a juvenile curfew. Would you read the ordinance for the second time?
Title of this ordinance reads as follows: An ordinance to amend Chapter 6.38 of the West Memphis Municipal Code to revise the juvenile curfew and for other purposes.
Concludes the second reading. We've had a lot of discussion about this ordinance. Could I have a motion and a second to place it on its third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, by aye. Opposed? Would you read it for the third and the final time?
Again, the title reads as follows: An ordinance to amend Chapter 6.38 of the West Memphis Municipal Code to revise the juvenile curfew and for other purposes.
Concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Did we put all those changes in the ordinance that we discussed last Thursday?
There was some discussion that was made about if the ordinance still exists as it would. This is not a different ordinance, is it?
No. The changes that Counselor McCatt had recommended, there was a couple of wording changes. Those changes were made.
Okay.
There are. I didn't see it.
And those changes were under Section 7.
And Section 4.
Number 2. Where he was suggesting, at the discretion of law enforcement officer.
I have with supervisor approval on mine.
Very good. Okay.
That was one over.
And in Section 4.
Shall replace.
Will.
May or will or something.
Look at Section 4.
Shall replace may, that's on 2. Under Section 4, item 2.
Okay.
They're in my copy here.
Okay. And I'm making a suggestion, suggestion to delete under Section 7, number 2 completely.
What's a proper procedure, Mr. City Attorney? Have a motion and a second to amend?
It would be a motion to amend. It would require a second and a vote.
Second. Motion and a second. Would you state the motion?
Motion is to, under Section 7, number 2, delete that paragraph altogether.
Will you read that paragraph? I don't have my copy.
This is the section that refers to discretionary use?
Yes.
Okay.
My copy first. At the discretion of the enforcement officer, a minor receiving a citation. It's under Section 7.2.
Well, the one I have in Section 7.2 says, "At the discretion of the law enforcement officer, any minor receiving a citation for violation of the minor curfew ordinance may be released to immediately return home, may be escorted to their home, may be taken into custody, and delivered to an appropriate juvenile authority to be held until a parent can be located to take custody of the minor."
Yes, yes, sir.
That's the Section 2 that is in the ordinance.
And that's the Section 2.
All right. I have a motion and a second to delete Section 2. Is that?
Yes. Was number 2 under Section 7.
Under Section 7, number 2.
Yes.
Well, that certainly takes the teeth out of the ordinance, but that's a motion and a second.
So we could discuss that right now?
We're going to discuss it now.
So if that were approved and two were deleted, then a parent or minor who violated the curfew would be guilty of a violation. And if this happens three times, there would be a fine for the third and any subsequent. Then you would go on to, nothing would preclude a law enforcement officer for taking any or all appropriate actions for a minor's violation of any other local or state law. So they could have two, there could be two things that they did wrong at this one incident. My understanding of that correct?
The way I would interpret this, if you were to delete Section 7.2, under penalties in law enforcement, the only thing that would leave you with then is Section 1 or Section 3. Section 3 would only apply if they found the minor to be in violation of some other law. So really, the enforcement option you have is remaining under Section 1, which means cite them for a violation. And after the third or subsequent violation, it would be a $200 fine or cost for either the parent or the minor child, or both.
If we delete that section, it will take officers' discretion away from doing their job, and I think that would be a big mistake.
Any other discussion?
What's the alternative? What are you saying to this?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if the officer stopped a child in violation, they cite the child. Now, remember now, the child would have to be cited at least three times before a fine would be levied anyway. That's what I'm saying. Am I correct, Mr. City Attorney?
The fines and costs would not come into play until a third violation or subsequent violation. Correct.
Thank you, sir. And that's my point. And so I don't think it would prohibit law enforcement from doing their jobs, but...
So Section subset 2 doesn't change any of that? If Section 2, or subset 2 is passed, it doesn't change the three, the stepped series of three before you receive a fine? That is all still in play, either way?
So we're saying...
Sub, I'm sorry. Well, subset 2 only says that the officer may choose not to cite the person. That is the gist of those sentences.
I guess, the understanding, I guess what I'm trying to get is, this discretion really only comes into play after the third citation, I mean, the third offense?
No.
No. No, that's not correct. As written with subsection 2, the officer would have some discretion as to what course of action in enforcement he chose to take. Those would be outlined there in subsection 2. If necessary, the officer could cite, not necessarily have to.
So where we getting to part where the first two times would be warning, and the third time would be actual citation?
Well, under Section 1, it says that the fines and costs only apply after a third conviction, conviction, a third violation, excuse me.
So Section 1 says they shall be guilty of a violation, therefore receiving a citation. Right. That would remove the discretion.
That would come to play when someone was cited and told to come to court, and that would apply in the court, and judge could find, should, under that, a judge should determine that they, if they, that they, if they're in violation, they're guilty. And a third or subsequent violation gets them a fine of up to $200 in cost.
The way the ordinance was amended, the officer, he or she has lost the discretion. They can only make the decision once they've contacted their immediate supervisor. So you have a bit of a check and balance in there to ensure that things are being handled properly. Plus, we established a paper trail where no matter what situation or what decisions the officer and the shift commander made, we will have a paper trail of every child's name and address. So you'll have a way to follow these things to make sure that things are flowing the way they should, from my perspective. So I think it's a good check and balance, and I don't think every child necessarily needs to be taken and cited. As one example is what we're giving, is they're leaving girlfriend's house, walking two blocks, and it's 12:05. You know, the parents knew they were on the way home, take the child home, and be done with it. I don't think you need to cite a child in that situation.
But I think, Almond, Kat, what City Attorney's reading is not what you just said. I think what he just read, number 2, it did not even mention the situation with supervisor, with verbal supervisor's approval.
Well, that's one of the changes we recommended it should be in there.
We changed that two weeks ago. He just does not have that copy in front of him.
Tracy, I'm also looking at this part where it say, "A parent or a minor found to be in violation of this article shall be guilty of a misdemeanor." I thought we completely got rid of misdemeanor.
That, and I'll speak with, Tyrone may want to address this, that must be the original version you have, but...
That was taken out.
The new one was taken out.
I've been at the meetings, I ain't got the new copy.
Like I say, it was taken out at the last police commission meeting.
Section 7.1.
Section 7.1. 7.1.
Yeah, it's gone.
It's gone.
I didn't get the new copy.
They were just giving last week.
I was here last week.
Under your Section 7.1, what does it say? Does it say?
Under mine, it still say, "A parent or a minor found to be in violation of this article shall be guilty of a misdemeanor." I didn't get the revised.
Mine says a violation. The misdemeanor language has been taken out. Misdemeanor was removed.
Yeah. I still got the old copy.
On your copy, Mayor Johnson, does it have it in that section as far as the police officer and supervisors?
The supervisors pencil it in.
Okay. That's what we want on the original, on the one that we are passing today.
With supervisor approval.
Right.
That must have been your view.
Supervisors approval.
I'm not sure. I mean, I've got the previous version. I don't see the updated version. Not in my folder.
Well, the one that gets the number, it should have supervisor's approval on it.
The change of Sheldon will and supervisor's approval, yes. Uh-huh, they do. But let's get, let's get back to this amendment. We've got an amendment on the floor that we want to talk about, and it has to do with Is there any additional, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Is there any additional discussion on the amendment? And then we'll come back to the ordinance. Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll on the amendment to the ordinance?
Counselor Taylor?
And this vote would be whether to remove subset 2 or not.
Remove the discretion, yes.
No.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor McLendon?
I'll pass.
Counselor Mundy?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Tyrone?
No.
Counselor Carter?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Cat?
No.
Counselor McLendon, did you want to vote on this one?
No, I'll have enough. No.
You don't want to vote or voting no?
No. I don't want to vote now.
You don't want to vote on this one? Okay, so we got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 nos, 2 yeses, and 1 abstention.
So the amendment fails. Now we're back to the ordinance. We have a motion and a second on the floor on the ordinance. Is there any additional discussion before we vote on the passage of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay?
Under Section 7.1, "A parent or minor found in violation of this article shall be guilty of a violation and upon conviction of a third violation and any subsequent violations shall be subject to a fine in amount not to exceed $200 for each offense." Now, if I'm reading this correct, it's saying parent and child? Am I reading that correctly?
It says parent or minor.
Parent or minor, found in violation.
Doesn't say both.
But that's my question. Who do we cite in that instance? The parent or the child?
My response would be that you would, that the police officer has the discretion to cite whoever he thinks the responsible party is. He's not mandated to cite the parent, he's not mandated to cite the child, but if he finds whichever one of them is, his discretion is the responsible party for that event occurring, then he can cite the responsible party. He can cite both.
Can cite both?
Yes.
If appropriate. Sure.
Okay, so, okay, so you can't cite both parent and child?
That, yes.
That's what, is that what I'm reading?
If that's appropriate, yes.
And that's left up to his discretion, the officer?
The police officer would have the discretion for determining whether it would be appropriate to issue citations to both the parent and the child.
So that's making police officer a judge?
Well, it's the legislation.
Police officer issue traffic citations all the time.
The matters are adjudicated before the district court judge, or before a juvenile court judge. The officer is merely the officer. He's the law enforcement means that can determine whether to cite, and if to cite, then it goes into court, and the disposition of that is determined in the courtroom by the judge.
Okay.
David, but as the council, we can change that where they'll cite the parent, all right? We can, we the legislating body, right?
You can write the laws, yes.
Yeah. Who do you think?
If anybody's be cited in a case like that, it's the parent.
It's the parent.
If you cite the child, the parent's gonna have to pay it anyway.
I agree, Counselor Coleman, that the parent will have to pay it, but you have some parents have reported the child as a runaway. So when they've taken the necessary measures to report the child as a runaway, and the officer finds that child, make proper notification with the parent, then, in that case, the child should be cited, because the parents have already made, notified the authorities that the child ran away, which is beyond sometime their control.
Good point. Okay. Well, I'm asking another question then. If the parent have already told you that the child is a runaway, and if it's a fine levied, the parents gotta pay it anyway, why would you even cite them at all? Because the parents gotta pay, and they already said the child ran away. So you're just punishing the parent again.
I agree, I agree with you. The fact is, once the parents have made, but 90% of the time when the child have reported, been reported as a runaway by a parent, the parents are encouraged to contact juvenile authorities and file what you call a fines, family in need of service. In other words, they want some court intervention, because when the child runs away, the parents have lost some sort of control over the child. They're usually encouraged to contact juvenile authorities and file fines to try to rectify the problem. Then we get the child before juvenile court judge, and we put some ramifications on them based on the violations. We have a lot of runaway, we have a lot of parents complaining about some children that have gotten out of control.
Okay. And you say it's a fin?
Fines, F-I-N-S, family in need of service.
F-I-N-S. Well, it seems like, then that provision need to be written into this ordinance right now, where if the parent would say the child is a runaway, or they don't have control over the child, it seems like this parent should file his fines, and that would eliminate them from having to pay a fine at all.
Usually when they do that, 90% of the time, the court may do away with the fine, but most officers are pretty much aware, and sometime I've noticed that they have encouraged some parents to make contact with our office, and they have. So when it comes to, it's just like school issues, when the truce deal happened. When the parents do the proper paperwork, instead of being fined a $500 fine, we impose a $100 fine, but we suspend that based on future good behaviors and what have. So there are ways to handle it, but by the same token, you have a select group of parents who refuse to take responsibility for their children. So that's where the officer discretion would come in, whether or not to cite the child or the parent.
Would it be easier just to have it noted in there, depending on the circumstances? Because like I said, that same discretion, if a parent has reported their child a runaway, right?
Right.
That officer still could cite their parent as well, right? So if they have taken them steps to notify them as a being a runaway, then at that time, you can cite the child and not the parent, but not having the discretion to cite both of them regardless of what the situation may be.
Like I said, they have the discretion, which I don't think they will cite both. However, personally, my personal opinion, I think this ordinance, it's not perfect, but it is pretty good in its form. It's pretty good in its form. It's not perfect, but it's pretty good in its form. And like I said, once they make contacts with those parents, then they can pretty much advise them of some particular steps that they can take to help them deal with the problem with the child. Like I said, some are responsible and some are not. I don't want to be misunderstood about that, but my personal opinion, with 12 years' experience in juvenile, this is pretty good in its form, but it's not perfect.
I think that's a good statement. It's not perfect, and we all know it's not, but we've got to remember, we're talking about discretion. There is one step beyond our officer. You know, a judge has that discretion when it comes to court, as to whether to fine or not to fine regardless of what the officer says. He's not bound by, he can fine up to $200, or he can fine a dollar if he wants to. So there is discretion beyond our police officer, and I agree with what Phillip said. It's not perfect, but it's a, it's a good ordinance. Any other, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve.
I just want to bring up one thing. On the Sunday through Thursday, 10 o'clock, I mean, I would like to see that go to 10:30, possibly. I don't know enough reasons why you would have some 17-year-olds out at 10 o'clock, but that's something that I think that should be changed.
Changed to what?
To 10:30.
Well, I believe you addressed it a little while ago. You can come back next month and amend it if you want to.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe, I guess it'd be easy to do it now, but we don't have to go back through this. I mean, you're looking at coming out of basketball games, school activities.
They're given an additional 45 minutes.
They get 45 minutes.
So the curfew, true lane, 10 o'clock is 10:45, all right?
Well, after activities, yes, there's a 45-minute discretionary period there.
You've got items A through Z. Gee, I believe it'll give you the exceptions to that particular rule, if you go through that list.
Yeah, I mean, I went through it, that's why I asked about that G, but I mean...
You see the 45 minutes leeway in there?
Yeah, I see the 45-minute leeway after school activities, I see that.
But that...
But I mean, that wasn't the only excuse I was just saying, but, I mean, that ain't something I've just hung up on, but I can think of many excuses that they would be out at the 10, or older child would be.
Any other discussion or ideas? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
No.
Counselor McLendon?
Yes.
Counselor Mundy?
No.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Tyrone?
Yes.
Counselor Carter?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 yeses and 2 nos.
Would you give that ordinance a number?
Ordinance number 2301.
Yeah, Mayor, this goes into effect 30 days from today, right?
Unless we add an emergency clause to it, it will.
I'd like to mention also, Mayor, I'm not opposing the ordinance per se, but I just have a severe problem with...
There's not one.
On Section 7.2, where it just says, "At the discretion of the officer, you got discretion to take some kids home, or return to parents, others not." That's my problem, and just wanted to make that clear. I'm not voting necessarily against the ordinance, but that particular part of the ordinance, I just don't agree with.
That concludes the items of old business. Moving into new business, we have a resolution on an 18-day work period for the fire department. Mr. City Attorney, do we want to read it in its entirety by title?
Make a more detailed, only.
Have a second.
Second.
Does that include R1 and 2?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second read R1 and 2 by title only. All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Would you read the title to R1?
Title of this resolution reads as follows: Resolution to establish an 18-day work period within the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
Heard the resolution read. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you clarify just, please?
Frank, would you address that?
Yes. Right now, Mr. Coleman, we have a 19-day work period.
Right.
According to Federal Labor Standards Act, a fireman working under a 24-hour period has to, 24-hour work period, has to have a work period. It has to be between 7 and 28 days. They're under 19-day work period right now, which means that they have two different pay scales. Two weeks, they work under one pay scale, one week they work under a third pay scale. It's been very confusing. This came up after the personnel director retired back in February, and I started helping out, and it's a chore between Dana and Candy to make sure that there's been mistakes made, new checks had to be issued and all of this, and it's all dealing, and making sure that we have the correct work period and what hours they're working per pay. This is just for overtime only. It doesn't affect the pay scale. Every pay scale's the same. An 18-day work period means that every fireman will work six hours overtime in that 18 days. So they all will work one pay scale and get paid the same.
Okay.
And in fact, in fact, the Kelly day pay does increase from $449 an hour to $509 an hour. So actually, they get a little bump up in their, in that Kelly day overtime pay. But this is, this way, there's no confusion, and Mr. Douglas, our HR guy, has done a lot of work with the Federal Labor Standards Act people and with the municipal league, and they, both of them agree this is by far administratively and less likely of lawsuits this way, because everybody gets paid the same thing, there's only one pay scale.
And let me ask a question to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. Nobody will lose any pay?
Actually, they get a little bit bump up.
Actually, they get a little bit more.
Yep. And the overtime pay, it goes, on the Kelly days, when that last period, they get $449, goes from $449 to $509. So actually, they get a little, what, 60 cent increase?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Would you give that resolution a number?
Resolution number 2006.
Mr. City Attorney, would you read the title to R2?
Title of this resolution reads as follows: Resolution to approve a contract between the City of West Memphis and Paymentis Corporation to provide electronic bill payment services for accounts with the West Memphis Utilities.
Heard this resolution read. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, by aye?
Aye.[1704.83]
Opposed, it carried. Would you give R. 2 a number?
Resolution number 2007.
I have no permission request. Committee reports, have any of the committees met since last week?
Public Works has met.
Okay, Public Works?
And I have the report from me. It's passed Tuesday. We've continued discussing a code enforcement officer issue. We talked with the Human Resources Director about developing a job description for a code enforcement officer. The sanitation department has been cleaning up from the World Changer jobs, and now the Ozark missions just completed their work, so they're going behind them cleaning up the debris from those projects. The city engineer reported that the pavement marking project is completed. The Southland Drive Phase 2, the advertisements have been submitted for engineering services for an equipment purchases. The Public Works approved the recommendation to purchase a track-mounted wood chipper that would be used for ride-of-way. This will be a split between the street department and the utility department, with the utility paying 70% of the cost and the street department paying 30% of the cost. It was reported that the, for the community rating system for special flood hazard areas has been upgraded from a Class 8 to a Class 7. This will mean a 15% discount to property owners who carry flood insurance in a special flood hazard area. All others will receive a 5% discount. There was no other business, and we've turned.
Okay. Airport?
Yes, sir. This report is from June 21st. Airport engineer Stacy Myers reported that three expansion joints in the newly reconstructed section of taxiway A are showing signs of considerable pavement movement during the hot weather. A portion of the taxiway will be closed for a short period of time to make several saw cuts to relieve the pressure. His firm will work with the contractor to implement corrective measures at no cost to the airport. Airport manager Linda Avery commented MSEC for their plans to add a flight school to their aviation's curriculum. Our airport has been selected by Long Acres Wildlife Management in New York to host original wildlife hazard assessment workshop this year. They also, officers were also elected, David Pike Chair, Steve Jones Vice Chair, Marvin Steele Secretary, and on that particular morning, we were in Hot Springs at the Arkansas Municipal League meeting, and that ends my report.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissions, committees?
Mayor, please, Matt, and I will be happy to read it, but it's gonna be basically exactly what we've just been discussing for the last 30 minutes on the council floor.
Okay.
So I'll save you the time if that's okay with everybody.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. That concludes the committees and commissions. Have no appointments, any announcements?
Yes. Mayor, first I want to ask if it's possible that Mr. Christian able to run something on Channel 17 about the exceptions to the curfew, for the parents can know and let them know that it also began on August 5th, so they can kind of be prepared for and help us with this issue as possible. The second thing, I kind of want to commend a young man, a young man named Quincy, he does heating and air, and there's a young lady that lives near me, air system went out in her home, and we know with the temperature these days, it's been very hot. And he went over and he freon'd her air conditioner up, and we know the freon for air conditioner these days are getting very expensive. So my announcement is, if you got an elderly, make sure you go out and check on them, make sure they got the proper air that they need, because right now, the temperature's been well over 100 degrees for, what, the last two weeks, weeks or two? So just asking that you go out and check on your family and your loved ones, as well as your pets.
And I'd like to piggyback on that. The Delta Neighborhood Action Council has a few air conditioners, brand new, to those who qualify. So my telephone number is 870-732-1498, because this is an emergency and call, and we'll go through an application process to see if you qualify.
Good. Any other announcements?
Mayor, were you gonna say something about the farmer's market today, from 12:30 to 5:30?
Go ahead, you just said, you just announced it.
So everyone go out and enjoy the fresh produce.
My last, my last announcement is...
At Worthington Park.
My last announcement is...
Go ahead, he's waiting.
All right, this is from the Arkansas Beautiful Commission, and of course, this is a letter that I, that I received from Ms. Brenda Halbert with the Arkansas Beautiful Commission. She said, Lorraine, congratulations on a very successful Great American Cleanup Campaign in West Memphis. It's obvious that you take pride in your community. I just wanted to personally thank you for the outstanding efforts of you and the volunteers, Mayor Johnson and city council members. She goes on to say, I have never seen such better organization and implementation of local cleanup and beautification events during the years I have been associated with Keep Arkansas Beautiful and the Great American Cleanup Campaign in Arkansas. Thank you so very much for your personal time and exceptional creativity in compiling the rapport report and all the supporting documents, including photos and news clippings. And she's just complimenting us even more, and I want to pat myself on the back, but everybody did a wonderful job, and we've been recommended to become a part of the Great American Cleanup as far as, one more letter, an affiliate. And I'll talk to you about that before I get into it on the floor.
Okay.
Because there are some things that are involved that you need to really know about before we look at it.
Okay, all right. Willis?
Yes, I'd like to let everybody know that, that we really worked hard on this curfew ordinance, trying to make it fair for everybody, trying to make it fair for all the citizens. We had a lot of discussion about it, and it's not what it ought to be, but we did work hard to try to get some things out of it that was not good for a lot of people, and we got that done. And I appreciate Reverend Coleman and James Pulliam, they really worked hard trying to get this thing fair for everybody.
And I would like to say, we had a meeting this past Monday night, but no one showed up except about six city council members, so that would suggest to me that people are concerned, but I don't know why, why they didn't show up to really view their, their opinions.
Any other announcements? That concludes the item of business that we have on our agenda, and we will...